All right. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting November the 21st, 2023, the City Council of Hopkinsville to order and call on invocation Ward Two.
Let's pray. Lord, I want to thank you for all the blessings that you gave everyone here tonight and everyone that's here in Hopkinsville. We would just want to make sure that this council makes good decisions to help the city as we go along. I want to thank the good Lord for being with my wife through her surgery. She's doing great and we really appreciate it from the prayer works and we really are very thankful for those blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge of the language is as a letter of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call on Ms. Brittany to call the roll.
Councilmember Francis. Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Here.
Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Here.
Councilmember Keel.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Handy.
President.
And we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Item five, awards and recognitions. We didn't have any of that tonight. We will move into item six, public comments. If anybody from the audience would like to come and speak at the podium, please state their name and address. Seeing none, we will move on to item seven, mayor's comments. Like for everyone to remember, Turkey Trot there on Thursday. We're going to get out and do a little running. Steve, expect to see you there?
My daughter has made me come. I won't be running, I'll be walking.
There you go. All right. Well, I'm going to be there to cheer you on. That's all I can tell you there. Also, like to give a big shout out to Toby and his crew over at Parks and Recs for their awards they won at the state the other day. They've done a great job. And also the 20-year pen of Dennis Kramer at the Fire Department for his 20-year pen. Also, to Public Works, had a lot of nice letters wrote in for doing above and beyond his job. And that was Scott Thompson. I'd like to give a shout out to him and Public Works for all they do. And thank you, Scott, for what they do over at the cemeteries. One thing that's near and dear to me is public safety. And my hat is off to the Hopkinsville Fire Department. They've been on scene since 1:30 this morning at Matulso, Old Dana. And they're still there. They're going to be there for the next couple of days. The fire is getting closer to under control, but they're still there. Crews are still there. They'll be there for the next couple of days. I just got off the phone with Steve Futral, the chief, and he said that they would be meeting with their safety teams in the morning because the structure is starting to crumble and fall in and they're having problems. And they're going to figure out how they can start excavating the metal structure off of this building so they can get it moved forward to get the fire out. Because the pit is still on fire and they're trying to flood the pit and it's still not out. So, and I'm thankful no one has been hurt so far. They got all the employees out. Everyone is safe at this time, but it is a lot of damage to that building so far. But thank you to Hopkinsville Fire Department on that. And as that being said, I move into item eight, report from officers and committee and guest speakers. And I call on Mr. Tom Britton. I believe we're going to talk about Canton Pike Rezoning.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, we have three recommendations from the Planning Commission to bring to you. As you know, we are proceeding forward with original zonings in the western area of the city. The first recommendation is a recommendation for B2 zoning. This is the Food Line Parcel out on Canton. This includes a total of three tracks, the Food Line Shopping Center, as well as United Southern Bank and one vacant parcel. These properties were developed many years ago to conform to B2 standards. Recommendation of Planning Commission is to zone at B2, which the Commission found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. If any council members or mayor have any questions, be happy to answer them on this recommendation.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Britton on this?
I'll make a motion before District of the Clerk for draft ordinance. Second.
I've got Steve and Don Marsh on second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Likewise, say no. All right, seeing none, we moving right along.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the second recommendation we're bringing to you is for two parcels on pile. These are parcels immediately adjacent to the Food Line side. The recommendation of the Planning Commission is to zone these parcels R3. The two properties affected include 1185 Pile Lane, 1189 Pile Lane. These properties are both single-family residences which conform with the zoning district recommended for assignment. The Commission found this to be in agreement with the comprehensive plan and is offering the recommendation to you. Mayor, if you have any questions or council members, be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Tom?
I have a question. The property owners, any comments from the property owners or concerns?
We did not have comments from these property owners. They were sent certified letters and we posted the property before holding the public hearing.
I saw the signs in their front yard. I mean, that should be a pretty good indicator. So it's good. Thank you.
Any other discussion with Tom? All right.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Lamburger, second by Travis. All right. Any discussion anymore? All righty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, seeing none, that moves right along. Item C, Pile Lane, Mr. Britton.
Yes, sir. Final recommendation is the zoning of R2 affecting two parcels in Peachtree Place. As you recall, back several months ago, the council zoned most of Peachtree Place, R2 with the exception of two parcels. The recommendation from the Planning Commission is for an R2 zoning which matches the zoning that was assigned to the rest of the subdivision. One of the lots is a single family which conforms. The other lot is a multifamily which would be non-conforming under the zoning, however, would have grandfather protections under the zoning ordinance. Property owners were notified, signs were placed, public hearing held, Commission found it in agreement with the comprehensive plan.
All right. Any discussion for Tom?
I've got a question. Tom?
Yes, sir.
We've been, we've been kind of going through these now honestly for several months.
Yes, sir.
Do we have an active plan in place? Some of this stuff has been built for years and years and years. And the fact that it's not zoned, I mean, there's no reason it's not zoned in my eyes. And I know I've heard that from folks in the community as well. What are we doing to be sure this does not happen anywhere else we're developing?
Yes, sir. And what the Commission has done is we're kind of taking a proactive policy as the city is annexing to proceed with original zoning. And you saw that with the industrial park back several months ago. The thought process is we don't need to let this happen again. So as the council annexes, we anticipate we will follow that up with original zoning almost immediately.
And are we going to continue to follow a track of any, any unzoned areas that are already developed to continue what we're doing here now?
Yes, sir. We are currently moving from Pile Lane all the way along Canton and we're systematically going parcel by parcel to bring recommendations to you on zoning. We are taking them parcels or subdivisions at a time. The thought process is we want to make sure we're paying special attention, giving adequate notice, providing that opportunity for property owner feedback. So we've still got several months of this activity to go through, but we're systematically going through it.
Great. Thank you. Any more discussion for Mr. Britton?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
So, so Tom, looking at these, the, the one that is a multifamily home, that property is zoned, I mean, if it's sold, it's still zoned. So if they sell the property and somebody wants to use one side and lease the other out, they can still do that?
Yes, sir. The property has grandfather protections under the zoning ordinance, which means it continues as is.
Okay.
The only change is if there was an abandonment of that property for a period of time, then it would have to convert back to the underlying zoning district.
Okay. So basically, they can do what they're doing to that?
Yes, as is. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion for Tom on this piece property? All right, needed a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I've got Jamie and Terry. All righty. All of them in favor say state aye. Any opposed? All right, moving right along. Thank you, Tom. Item D, monthly financial statement. Ms. Melissa Clayton? Come on down.
All right. I like presenting October's financials.
She's smiling anyway.
To see her face smiling is always good.
Right. We had two interfund transfers in the month of October. One to the Hot Town Hoppers for $3,500 and then one to sponsor the regional luncheon for Southwestern Economic Development Council. Total interfund transfers for October was 5,000. Year-to-date interfund transfers, 29,324, leaving remaining in the interfund, 70,676. Payroll tax for the month of October is running above budget. Right now, the increase in equivalent payroll for the year is at 8.61%. You can see the total, what we budgeted was 6,794.60 and what we collected was 7,95312. So no lull in our property taxes yet. Property taxes for the year have been budgeted at 5,205,600 and we collected in October, 4,851,651, which is 93.2% of our budget. Insurance premium tax for the year is running above budget as well. We're running at an increase in equivalent premium, premiums for the year at 38.9%. Total collection so far is 2,434 out of a budgeted $6 million. So business licenses still continue to come in strong. Through four months, we've collected 808,185. As far as the general fund goes, this is the month where we get to have our, where we get to be in the black. So we have prior year encumbrances of 256,251, collected revenue to date was, is 20,503,101. Actual expenses year-to-date, 17,841,484, giving us revenue over expenses of 2,917,868. If we take out our encumbrances for the month of October, we have positive revenue over expenses, 2,846,279. So just our fund balance comparison between where we were this year, where we are this year and where we were last year, we have a little bit more revenue over expenses by about 130,000 than we did at this time last year. Our MRA fund, we started the year with the 253,291. We've collected 263,639. Our actual expenses are 429,497, giving us positive revenue over expenses of 187,433. And our, after our encumbrances, we have 186,705 in our MRA fund currently. Our capital fund, we started the year with 409,976 in encumbrances. We've put 618,897 into capital. Our actual expenses are 783,638, giving us positive revenue over expenses of 245,235. We do still have encumbrances of 148,855, giving positive revenue over expenses of 96,380. So all our funds are in the positive. As far as our department budgeting, we should be at 33%. We have a few departments that are over that. Our information technology probably calls your attention at 49%. We've paid a lot of our software licensing fees out the first, the first four months of the year. So we, we think they're going to be okay. We're not planning a budget amendment yet, but they are running quite a bit over on their expenses. And then as far as our public safety sector, our ECC and both our EMS, they're both running over budget. Those two departments are payroll only. So we have a lot of pay items that we pay out earlier in the year, like our vacation payout and things like that. We think both of these will probably come back in under budget or at least closer to it as we go throughout the year. We know that our EMS will always be over budget because we don't budget for their unscheduled overtime till the end of the year. And then our public works areas, you guys know Parks and Rec is generally over budget this time of year because most of their programming happens in the summer and then they come back under budget throughout the year. So total general fund is at 36.6% of expenses spent. MRA is at 41.4% and the capital fund is at 30%. Our cash fund balance, we started the year with 15,158,964, plus our year-to-date receipts of the 20 million, less our year-to-date expenses of the 17 million, gives us our cash balance at 17,820, 581, sorry, less our encumbrances. Available cash is 17,748,992. After we subtract out all of our reserve accounts, our unassigned cash fund balance is 14,079,428, and that is a percentage of unassigned to the operating budget of 35.8%. I did throw one slide in here as a comparison to last year. We are right about the exact same place we were this time last year. So that's always good. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about the financial state of the city.
Any questions for Ms. Clayton?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All righty. Item nine, approval amendments. November the 7th, 2023, regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Amy and Steve. All righty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All righty. Now we get down to item 10. Okay. Ordinance 40-2023, Princeton Road rezoning, second reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, 2.27 acres of property located on Princeton Road. Whereas Community and Development Services made a favorable recommendation at their September 25th, 2023 meeting for City Council to approve rezoning application R23-9-1. And whereas City Council concurs that recommendation is in agreement with the Hopkinsville-Cris천 County Comprehensive Plan, the existing classification is inappropriate and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the rezoning. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1 pursuant to KRS 100.211, City of Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances and Community and Development Services recommendation dated September 25th, 2023, approximately 2.27 acres of property located on Princeton Road as further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein, is hereby rezoned from R2 Single Family Residential District to B2 General Business District. Section 2, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
All righty.
Yep, second.
Travis and Mr. Don Marsh. All righty. Any discussion? Seeing none, I ask Ms. Brittany to call the roll.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
That does pass on second reading.
All righty. Ordinance 41-2023, mask prohibited.
An ordinance amending Chapter 130.05 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances relating to masks prohibited. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, Section 130.05 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is amended as follows. 130.05, masks prohibited. Wearing hoods or masks. For the purpose of this section, the following definitions shall apply unless the context clearly indicates or requires a different meaning. Public place, a place to which the public or substantial group of persons has access and includes but is not limited to highways, transportation facilities, schools, places of amusements, parks, places of business, playgrounds, and hallways, lobbies, and other portions of apartment houses and hotels not constituting rooms or apartments designed for actual residence. No person shall while wearing any hood, mask, or device whereby any portion of the face is hidden or covered so as to conceal the identity of the wear enter, be, or appear in any public place within the city of Hopkinsville. C, the following are exempted from the provisions of Division B above. One, any person under 12 years of age. Two, any person wearing, using masks in a theatrical production including use of Mardi Gras celebrations and masquerade balls. Three, any person lawfully engaged in trading or employment or in a sporting activity where a mask or facial covering is worn for the purpose of ensuring the physical safety and physical protection of the wear or because of the nature of the occupation, trade, or professional or sporting activity. Four, any person wearing a gas mask in drills, exercises, or emergencies. And five, any person wearing a mask for health or medical reasons, including, including but not limited to during a public health emergency for which masks are required or recommended. Section 2, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, any and all ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved.
Bruce and Terry. All righty. Any discussion?
Question. It was brought to my attention and I guess, I'm sorry. Where it says, I guess line B, I'm concerned we don't have any like religious protections in this. And I didn't think of that. It was brought to me. So I thought I'd bring it to council to share. I don't know if that's something we ought to look into or if it's even a thought, but I just noticed that it was not included anywhere.
What do you think on that, Doug?
That's up to council to include any, any other exceptions that you may wish to. That would be something that if it's challenged to be enforced, that certainly could be raised at that point. I'm not aware that this ordinance, that the other cities that have used this ordinance, that it's been challenged for that reason. Okay.
All right.
So I need to ask a question. Okay?
What exactly are you referring to?
I'm sorry?
What are you referring to exactly?
Well, like I said, it was brought to me, just I guess line B, concealing any portion of the face. There are some religions that do that. And I just don't want us to get caught up in some form or fashion if, I guess, it's nowhere mentioned in here that that is protected? Or that's a protected class?
And I mentioned, I think he's talking about the, you know, the, the wearing of a hijab or, you know, you know, burka, certainly all the way. But it, the, the stipulation in B is for the purpose of concealing their identity, which in some cases, that is the case. And so if you'd like to add in case of religious exemption or something like that, I mean, it's your privilege to add that.
If, if you do make that, make that amendment, of course, we'd have to have two readings. But it would need to be specific enough so it could be interpreted and enforced.
It's gonna be hard. I just wanted to set your, set your mind at ease possibly or your constituent that called you because the, the, the purpose was for, you know, the concealing of their identity. I think it's for public safety. So.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I don't think that anyone would challenge anyone wearing something for religious reasons. This wasn't, that was not at all the purpose of this ordinance. And I don't think, I don't think we need to add it because I feel like for a religious purpose, that just kind of goes without saying. But I, I don't, that's just kind of my gut, but it's, it's whatever everyone wants to do.
And Mr. Willen can keep it straight if he wants to, but we can't create a statute or law, I don't think, that would violate the state law or statute or the Constitution of the United States.
Right.
So that is protected, you know, under the Second Amendment. So, or First Amendment, excuse me. Go back to school.
Any more discussion? All righty. Got a motion in a second. I'll call the clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
And that does pass on second reading.
All righty. Ordinance forty-two dash twenty twenty-three, FY twenty-three, twenty-four, operational budget, second reading.
Amending the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual budget and the employee classification and compensation plan for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, by summary, section one of ordinance thirty-four, twenty twenty-three, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four is amended as follows. Revenues, general fund, forty-seven million, three hundred eighty thousand, six hundred ninety-six. Municipal road aid fund, six hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-two. Prior year, two million, two hundred ninety-two thousand, fifty-two. Total revenues, fifty million, three hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred seventy. Expenses, general fund, forty-nine million, six hundred sixty-six thousand, seven hundred seventy-six. Municipal road aid fund, six hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-two. Total expenses, fifty million, three hundred fifty thousand, four hundred ninety-eight. Surplus, five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two. Section two, section two, ordinance fifteen, twenty twenty-three is amended to add code enforcement officer one to pay grade nine, code enforcement officer two to pay grade ten, and code enforcement officer three to pay grade eleven. The full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned city clerk of the city of Hopkinsville at seven fifteen South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of eight o'clock AM to four thirty PM Monday through Friday.
So moved. Steve and Terry. Yes. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call on clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
And that passes on second reading.
All righty. Ordinance forty-three dash twenty twenty-three, FY twenty-three, twenty-four, capital budget, second reading.
Amending the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual capital equipment or property replacement budget for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, that section one of ordinance thirty-five, twenty twenty-three, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four capital equipment and property replacement budget is amended as follows. Transfer from general fund, one million, seven hundred ninety thousand, ninety-nine. Transfer from general fund wins additional insurance premium, one hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred eighty-five. Transfer from general fund police department, one hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred nine. Insurance proceeds, thirteen thousand, one hundred and seven. Prior year capital equipment reserve, one million, six hundred eighty-six thousand, six hundred and six. Total capital revenues, three million, seven hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred and six. Expenses, administration, seventy thousand. Information technology, seventy thousand. Police, one million, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-two. Fire, one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Fire prevention, one hundred and fifty-five thousand. City maintenance, four hundred and seventy thousand. Parks and Recreation, one hundred and forty thousand. Sportsplex, seventy-five thousand. Buildings and property, five hundred and fifty thousand. Total capital expenses, three million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-two. Surplus deficit, two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four. Section two, if any section subsection sentence clause or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, any and all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Lord, help us.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, I call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
And that passes on second reading.
All righty. Ordinance forty-four dash twenty twenty-three, code enforcement board, second reading.
An ordinance, an ordinance amending certain sections of chapter thirty-three of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances relating to the Code of Ordinance Enforcement Board. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, by summary, sections thirty-three point one eighty-four, thirty-three point one eighty-eight, and thirty-three point one eighty-nine of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances are amended as follows. Thirty-three point one eighty-seven, organization of board meetings quorum. Section H is amended to change a reference from Hopkinsville-Cushion County Planning Commission to Hopkinsville Fire Department. Thirty-three point one eighty-eight, enforcement proceedings. Section ENF are amended to change references from Hopkinsville-Cushion County Planning Commission to Hopkinsville Fire Department. Thirty-three point one eighty-nine, hearing notice, final order. Section B is amended to change a reference from Hopkinsville-Cushion County Planning Commission to Hopkinsville Fire Department. The full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned city clerk of the city of Hopkinsville at seven fifteen South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of eight o'clock AM to four thirty PM Monday through Friday.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Bruce and Terry. All right. Any discussion on this code enforcement? Seeing none, I call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
And that passes on second reading.
Item F, ordinance forty-five dash twenty twenty-three, basic property maintenance code, second reading.
An ordinance amending chapter one sixty-three of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances relating to basic property maintenance code. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, by summary, section one sixty-three point oh two of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is amended as follows. One sixty-three point oh two, building official, is amended to change references from Hopkinsville-Cushion County Planning Commission to Hopkinsville Fire Department. The full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned city clerk of the city of Hopkinsville at seven fifteen South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of eight o'clock AM to four thirty PM Monday through Friday.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I got Terry.
Second.
And Don. All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy. Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
And that passes on second reading.
All righty. Municipal orders. Municipal order forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, eight oh six South Main Street, property transfer.
Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the attached deed transferring property located at eight oh six South Main Street to the city of Hopkinsville.
All right.
So moved.
Second.
Bruce, Dean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Municipal order fifty dash twenty twenty-three, surplus properties.
Whereas the attached list of computers, cell phones, and related ancillary equipment were purchased for use by various city departments, and whereas said computers, cell phones, and equipment are in disrepair or no longer supported by the manufacturer and are of no value to the city, now therefore be it ordered, Hopkinsville City Council hereby declares the attached list of property as surplus and authorizes the mayor to dispose of said property and methods available in KRS eighty-two point oh eight three.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Jamie? Second?
Second.
And Travis? All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Resolutions. Uh, resolution oh five dash twenty twenty-three, storm debris removal grant fund.
Designation of applicant's agent. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Hopkinsville as follows. That James Arnott Jr. Mayor is hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of the city of Hopkinsville, a public entity established under the laws of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, this application and to file in the appropriate state office for the purpose of obtaining certain federal financial assistance under the Disaster Relief Act, Public Law two eighty-eight, ninety-third Congress, or otherwise available from the President's Disaster Relief Fund, that the city of Hopkinsville, a public entity established under the laws of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, hereby authorizes its agent to provide to the state and to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for all matters pertaining to such federal disaster assistance, the assurances and agreements printed on the reverse side hereof.
So moved.
Second.
Bruce, Travis? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item thirteen, other. Does council have any other business they'd like to speak about tonight? Seeing no other business, I call on item fourteen, council member comments. Ms. Amy?
I just want to say something briefly about what happened on Thursday. Not having a quorum, honestly, it was embarrassing. It was, it was terrible on many levels, and I know some of you had legitimate reasons for not being here, I get it. And I know sometimes things come up, but I feel like as a council, this is our, our commitment to be here, and so I really, that just can't happen again. It wasn't even just about us that were here and had to cancel, but the staff that was all here, the public that was here, sitting in the audience, having to tell these people, sorry, we can't have a meeting, so we don't have a quorum. It was embarrassing. That's all I can say about it, but, and I know a lot of you are going to have, you know, reasons why you couldn't be here, and I get it. But at the same time, I think in the future, we just need to make sure that we plan better so that we can be at our meetings because this is what we were elected to do. So I just wanted to share that today.
Mr. Crabtree?
So following along with what Amy said, I would like to change how council is paid. And let me elaborate a little bit. We do a lot of things as council member, but really the only work we do is when we're in this seat three times a month. So what I would like to, because we vote, and when we vote, we're representing our constituents and the citizens of Hopkinsville. If we're not in this seat, we're not doing the work that we were elected to do. So what I would like for Mr. Willen, you others to look into, I would like for us to be paid for meeting attendance, same rate, same pay, but divided by three. If you miss a meeting, for whatever reason, uh, one-third of your pay, you don't get paid for that meeting that you missed. Going along with that, I would like for us to look at a, a, a technology answer. And what I mean by that, there are times that people have to travel, they, they cannot physically be here, but with the technology that's out there today, if it's acceptable and we could implement a technical solution, it would be easy for people to be here but not be here and still fulfill that same function. And I know we've talked about it, looked at it. I'd like to give a concrete answer on what we can and what we can't do, and if we can make that into a motion after we've done our research, I'll make that motion. I just want to be sure that it's researched and properly thought of and then put out to council.
Let me just give you my initial feedback. First of all, on the changing of the compensation for council, the Kentucky Constitution and the statutes do not allow you to change compensation for this council. That would only, it can only go into effect for the next council.
That's okay.
After that election. So, and I'll look into that to see, I believe that the statute does allow a per diem instead of a salary, but I will look at that and see what your options are and, and can do that research. On the, on the video attendance, there is a new statute that allows attendance by video, but it's very convoluted. It has requirements that I think could really get in the way of you conducting a good meeting because in the, every, every participant, every member of council has to be on that video for the entirety of the meeting. If one council member loses connection, the meeting is over. And then you cannot conduct any more business. So there are still some problems. It can be done. I think it's probably more for an emergency type situation, a pandemic. We now have that in place should we ever have to go that route again, but I can look at it because there, there are some options out there. I think it would require this council to pass an ordinance, adopting that, it would have to be noticed as a video meeting, and then you would have to follow all of the requirements of that statute, which I, I think could get in the way of, of what you're trying to do here. But I, I will share all that information with you.
Instead of just me, Doug, if you could come back and brief council on what we can and can't do, and if we need to put it to a motion, we will.
Well, we will bring it back to council on that. I'm not in favor of a Zoom meeting. I'll tell you that right now. And I'm just going to tell all of you I'm not. Doug knows I'm not. Steve knows I'm not.
It's, it was hard.
It, it's hard. I've watched them. I've tried to do it when we was running, when I was running for mayor. It is something that's, got to keep up with it. And my hat's off to you because every time you looked up, IT was trying to keep everything hooked up, come back, talk to us. So as mayor, as me as mayor, I am not going to push for a Zoom meeting at all. I expect, I expect all of you to be here as much as possible.
Well, my, my thought, Mayor, is that if somebody is away from here, if they can do it, but, you know, let Doug look into it, come back with a solution. let Doug look into it, come back with a solution. I, I don't know. But I, I would like to have, if, if somebody had to be away, that they could still perform that function. I mean, they could be sick at home, but still attend the meeting, so to speak. I, I would think that would be something that wouldn't be the norm. But if they could still fulfill that function and do their job, then that would still count as a meeting that they've attended. Yeah, that's one of my.
I have a, I have a comment.
I'm sorry.
Terry?
So none of us are here for the pay, all right? And the sixteenth was an anomaly for many of us because we had to change the original date, which was going to throw off for me. I had a cruise scheduled for my forty-fifth anniversary. And I don't feel like I have to explain, but I'm going to. It was done like a year in advance. And we changed the date of our original, and then when the quorum wasn't met, we changed the date again for today, which included three or four different meetings for me to attend today, along with a couple of other items that I had to do. And so when, when we, when we change the dates, it's going to cause some conflicts. And, and I'm sorry that, you know, it affected the staff and everybody had to show up and the public had to see that in full display. But sometimes life's going to happen. And I, I mean, I think we're chasing a rabbit.
No, can I just say something on that really quick? Terry, this is not directed at you at all. The real, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to get ugly, but the reality is this, when that meeting was, was scheduled for a different date, there were three of you that we knew couldn't be here, and you were one of those.
Right.
So when I talked to Steve earlier that day about something unrelated, I said, are we going to have a quorum? Because I knew numbers were going to be tight. And he said barely. Because if everybody that was supposed to be here would have been here, we would have had a quorum. So we all knew all along you weren't going to be here. And there's going to be times where some people can't be here. But then there are other times where, you know, and I hate to pick on Natasha because she's not here to defend herself, but we're on the phone, we're trying to figure out where she is. That's what I'm talking about. So if you have a reason you can't be here, and you let, you know, you let the mayor know, or you let Steve know, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about people who just aren't here and maybe gave a minute's notice or just didn't show up.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but I'm just so tired of this back and forth. Uh, the only person we owe an explanation to as to why we've missed are the people that voted for us. Um, so it's not anybody's place on council to ask, where's the next person? Uh, I get it, Amy, I really do, but this back and forth, I just, it's pointless at this point.
It's not pointless though, because we were elected to do a job. I just wanted to make a point that we need to be here. That's it. I don't want to go back and forth on everybody's excuses, but the reality is we owe it to our constituents. We owe it to the staff that was here to have a meeting. That's it. I don't want to fight about it. That's all I have to say.
That our absent will answer for. That's all I can say. But this back and forth is, it should stop.
We're done.
Mayor Knight?
Yes.
I'm not done.
I didn't figure you was when you said so.
I understand everybody's point of view, Matthew understands yours. But when you're sitting, I was elected to commit to the whole chair. When you're sitting there.
It's a different thing.
And, and, and Amy knows this, and Travis knows, and Chuck knows because of positions we've held, uh, past chairs, co-chairs, whatever, and Jason, you, you as well, know that, first off, we get the meeting scheduled in January. And I understand, Terry, what you said about when we start moving meetings. However, the meeting Thursday, and I'm not knocking, I mean, I, I understand. But that meeting was actually scheduled in January. It's special called because it's not on the standard by ordinance date. And the reason I moved the meeting to today is because of items six A and seven C and seven A and seven B. Because we've had some folks that have been sitting in the audience for months, months, that were wanting those street names because it's very personal to them. They've reached out to several council members, not me, didn't reach out to me, but I know one of them lives in, uh, Councilmember Martin's district. So they did, they showed up. They've been showing up. And they came that night thinking, hey, you know, we're finally going to get this done. They've been coming to meetings for months. And when I'm on a, a, a Zoom meeting at eight-thirty in the morning, going over tonight's meeting, going over the agenda, and at eight-thirty in the morning, we have three people going to be out, okay? Throughout the day, I get a few more. But if you know you're going to be out, it's not that hard to pick up the phone. Because I had until, as the chair, I had until six o'clock to cancel the meeting. And, you know, if by three o'clock, four o'clock, I'm sure, I'm going to point some, some folks out here. Troy Body would love to have gone home. I'm sure Melissa Clayton would have loved to have gone home. I'm sure Pacheco back there would love to have gone home. Dave Herndon would love to have stayed at home. Saw him show back up. Figured he went home, came back. Uh, our staff from CDS would have loved to have gone home. They've been here, if I shot an average, I'd say since eight o'clock that morning, on average, some of them earlier, maybe some of them later. We're going to shoot the average. For me, it's not about owing the tack, uh, the voters explanations or owing anybody. I'm not saying you owe anybody an explanation. What I'm saying is respect people's time. Because time is probably one of the most valuable assets a lot of people in this room have. So when council member Meek, Marsh, and, and Bell let me know two weeks before the meeting that they weren't going to be here. Two weeks, one council member didn't even bother calling any of us. An hour isn't, you know, if you knew it, and I'm not saying you knew what time you weren't going to be here, Matthew. I don't, I don't know. It, it doesn't matter. But, you know, as early as possible, because if we are getting down to that, it gives us a chance to let these folks say, hey, we're not going to have a meeting tonight. I rescheduled the meeting for tonight because we have the city's business to do. We already had a meeting. It's best to send with your men. We've done it before with city council meetings, with committee of the whole. Everybody's supposedly planning on being here at six o'clock anyway, so we're just going to bump it up an hour. You know, and Amy didn't even talk about the six of us that did show up. All we're saying is, it's a, it's a time respect. I'm not saying you, who you owe an explanation to. You don't owe an explanation to me or anybody. I'm just merely stating, be sure if you're going to miss, we go from three out to six out in a matter of a few hours. It'd be nice to get a phone call, so we can send folks home, not to mention the guys back here in the booth. I'm sorry, our IT guys were all here as well. You know, what did it cost the city? We had the lights on, had the air running, you know? It's a phone call. Make a phone call.
Any other comments?
Hi Mayor.
How you doing?
I'm good. I, I would just like to do a shout out to Dave Herndon and Mike Perry. Uh, when I email these guys and say, hey, there's a pothole, um, apparently my potholes are big potholes and, Dave said it was a doozy, but those guys got it filled. So I just want to say, you know, thanks for responding. Yeah, so yeah, they did a good job, so thanks.
I want to do a shout out to Mike Perry and Public Works as well. I had an issue from, um, one of the constituents from my ward, um, on a water easement issue behind their property. And I didn't have the answer, so I went to the guys that had the answer. And he got it to me within fifteen minutes. I talked to the constituents. They went out there, looked at the property. I mean, that, that kind of stuff to me is above and beyond. So hats off to you guys for all you do. Thank you.
Any other comments?
And I have one more. I'm sorry. And thanks to Blaine. Um, he and I met with a contractor today out in the cold and the wind. And I, I just really appreciate him stepping up and helping me out with the, the water park.
All right, okay, anymore? All righty, uh, I move into item fifteen, uh, Ward two, Mr. Bruce Smiley.
I've got a short quote here to share. Um, I think the way the world is right now, this is, this is a good quote. Be the change that you wish to see in the world. That's a quote from Gandhi. And with that, I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all of the favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you.